Council meeting for May 25th to order at 7:00 PM. Mr. Schwartz, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Social distancing, we are still limited on seating. Public call-in number is 1469-998-6201. When prompted, enter the following conference ID, 342-631-867. Ms. Lees, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
Present.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the executive session memorandum of May 11th?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the executive session memorandum of May 11th. There's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, nine to zero. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11th meeting?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our May 11th meeting? All those, there's a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We're going to count. Nine, Mr. Davis, I'm sorry. Okay, nine, zero. Part of the meeting. Approval of the minutes for May 19th meeting, special session. Kind of motion?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 19th special session. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine, zero. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Mr. President, I would move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda for tonight. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Petitions by citizens who are present, I have one card. Anybody else who would like to speak tonight, I can fill out a white card out front and hand it to the clerk. We're going to start, however, with the Hamilton County Community Foundation as a presentation on their hard work.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to take some time this evening to speak to the council. It's certainly an honor to be here this evening. We're here to talk about our partnership and... Yes, ma'am, sorry. Tom Killian, I am the president of the Hamilton County Community Foundation. Also here with me tonight is Gina Sealy, who will be doing certainly part of the presentation as we talk about the partnership and what we've been able to accomplish together. For those of you that are unfamiliar with the mission of the foundation, we exist to mobilize people, ideas, and investments to make our community a more equitable place for all individuals, no matter place, race, or identity. We really do that in three different ways. We partner with not-for-profits throughout the community, help lead on certain initiatives throughout the community, and grant dollars with our unrestricted endowment. Our unrestricted endowment is responsible for many of the dollars that go to not-for-profits throughout Hamilton County. Our unrestricted endowment dollars partner with the Noblesville dollars. Those dollars, when joined together, fund several initiatives throughout Noblesville. In fact, when you look at a five-year look back, the Noblesville Fund was right at about When you combined it with the other assets that we sent out to particular initiatives in that five-year period, we were able to invest over $850,000. So we believe it's been a phenomenal partnership where we've been able to really leverage your dollars to be able to help provide more opportunity for the not-for-profits throughout Noblesville. The other thing that I would mention is that, you know, we have a long history of Noblesville representation on our board as well as our grants committee. We're proud to say that we have currently seven people from Noblesville serving on our grants committee. And right now, we've had a few come off from the board, but still have one as our board chair, who is a Noblesville resident. At this time, I'd like to invite Gina up, who can dig a little bit deeper specifically into the grants and what we've been able to affect in regards to change throughout Noblesville.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much, Tom. Again, I'm Gina Sealy. I am the community leadership officer for Hamilton County Community Foundation, and I'm grateful to be here with you all this afternoon, talking with you all about our joint mission initiatives for Hamilton County and specifically here in Noblesville. Let me go down to, Tom already mentioned the overview of last year, so I'd really like to get into some grants. That is my area of expertise for the foundation and utilizing the Noblesville Fund to make impactful investments in Hamilton County. So fiscal year 2021 grants to date include Trinity Free Clinic in Noblesville Main Street. And again, going back to what Tom said, we've leveraged the Noblesville Fund to actually make an even larger investment. So for example, with Trinity Free Clinic, the Noblesville Fund award was $7,500. We also combined $12,500 of our community endowment to make a total grant to them of $20,000. And that was specifically for the Strategic Plan Action Initiative Phase One for them. Again, Noblesville Main Street, we awarded them a grant for $2,500 for their Farmers Market SNAP program, and that actually was just strictly from Noblesville Fund. Society of St. Vincent de Paul, Our Lady of Grace, we awarded them $6,000 so far this year for their food pantry restock. And then we combined several other community endowment and Northern Hamilton County Fund and our Westfield Endowment for a full total grant award of $10,000. And then lastly, Grace Care Center received $5,000 from Noblesville Fund for their Mobile Choice Food Pantry, and then combined again with our community endowment, Northern Hamilton County Fund and Westfield Endowment, we made a total grant to them of $20,000. Now, this is a...
Sorry.
This is a very small text, and I apologize, but I can get this information to you all if you would like. This is a five-year look back of our joint efforts in making impactful investments in Hamilton County. And again, as Tom mentioned, if you go all the way down to the third page, we have utilized $254,000 of Noblesville Fund, combined with our $605,000 of our unrestricted endowment, to make $860,000 of community impact these last five years with our two funds. I just want to remind you all, if you don't know, of our grant timeline. For those that are unaware of how this all works out, we have three grant rounds that we receive competitive grant applications for. Those line up with a grant review committee. Again, we have seven Noblesville residents who are, sit on that committee and help us make decisions regarding grants. And then those, again, also line up with our board for a full board approval at that time. Going into some other Noblesville initiatives very quickly, we are currently investing about $45,000 in interrupting racism trainings for Noblesville to utilize. There are 200 slots available for these trainings, and we are working with the city to get Noblesville residents trained in that. And again, upcoming trainings are in June of this year. We also just recently awarded a $20,000 grant to the NDC, the Noblesville Diversity Coalition, and that was a racial equity grassroots grant that we provided to them. And that is to help them, you know, fulfill unfunded but essential areas of need that they wrote for in that application, to help improve their awareness, their outreach, and whatnot with racial equity in Noblesville. We are also working closely with Mayor Jensen with the Noblesville Well-being Coalition, and he is a co-leader on that, as well as Dr. Beth Nedermaier, Superintendent of Noblesville Schools. And really, the goal of this is to create a culture of well-being by expanding community education and engagement, ensure easy, rapid access to high-quality, affordable treatment, prevent crises, and streamline crisis services, and then support youth and families. And we look forward to working with Mayor Jensen and others on this initiative specifically here in Noblesville. One last thing I want to mention to you all is that in collaboration with the City of Noblesville, Matt Light, and Hamilton County Tourism, we submitted a $2 million letter of support for a South Noblesville White River Community Enhancement project. We should know more about that here in the coming weeks, whether or not we will be invited for full application submission. But we're very excited to be working with the City of Noblesville on this initiative to really improve South Noblesville and incorporate the White River into that plan. And that is pretty much it as far as it goes from Hamilton County Community Foundation. Do we open it up for questions at this time?
President? I just have a question. Will you please email this presentation to us because it's very blurry on our screen?
Absolutely.
So trying to read through those details is not possible.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would just make the comment, the $850,000 is a significant investment on the community, and that number didn't come top of mind for me, so I appreciate your being here to show us that. It just goes to show how you can leverage some dollars and make some things happen. And I appreciate all the work you and Tom and the board do, and we'll continue to look to hear from you, but this is great information, and it helps a lot of people and sometimes goes unnoticed, so we appreciate your assistance.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
So petitions by citizens, I have one here from Mr. Corbett. Would you like to wait till that item or speak now? You want to wait till that? Thank you. Council committee reports, the... We're going to wait a little bit. Thank you. Downtown District Committee?
Yes, I have two reports of the Downtown District Committee. Members of the committee met last Friday, May 21st, with representatives from the county to talk about an idea that is being proposed by the Gordon family of Gordon Marketing Group about trying to enhance the Logan Street Bridge and create what they're calling the Bridge of Flowers. And it's something that is very much in line with as we are trying to expand our downtown west of the river, that as we're looking at the downtown streetscape plan, as well as for here right around the courthouse square, we're also looking at plans west of the river and along Logan Street. So we're very intrigued and enthusiastic about the idea of this bridge of flowers, and we'll be working with the county to really identify what can be done and then be sharing that with the Gordon family. And they've committed to pledge staff members to come and be able to help tend the garden, and then they're also looking to be raising money to help support the flower and maintenance of these flowers. So it's an exciting project that will be an enhancement to what we're already doing with the Downtown District. And then the committee met yesterday, and so thank you, Mrs. Lees, for getting these minutes put together. We had a summary and status of funds. We've had money appropriated this year to help with the design for the downtown streetscape plan. And then because we've made the decision to delay that timeframe for doing the areas right by the courthouse, some of those funds that we had anticipated paying for a bond payment, we can redirect towards other areas, so whether those are for projects west of the river or other, perhaps additional streetlights could be added to the program. But we have not made any recommendations, or we're not coming to you with recommendations for fund expenditures at this time. I do want to thank Mr. Eyre. He has brought these beautiful peonies from his own garden because we had an extremely successful peony festival that was led by Kelly McVeigh and several other community members who put together this peony festival this past weekend. That was a huge success. And I know Noblesville Main Street was part of that. The Downtown District Committee actually made a contribution to the festival, so we were excited to see the success of that program and looking forward to turning Noblesville into a peony capital for the state of Indiana and hopefully have a festival in many years to come. So thank you, Mr. Eyre, for sharing your beautiful...
You might want to thank my wife. They would not look like that.
Thank you, Tony. We appreciate you sharing your beautiful peonies with us. And then we did talk through some of the alleyway activations. It's an ongoing project, especially with the East Alley, and so we are examining different potential arches to go there, as well as some potential artwork, so it's a work in progress. And as always, we do talk about streetlights and making sure that they're moving from black, from green to black, so that will continue on. And then we also talked about Brick Alley rehabilitation and what makes the most sense, both from a historic preservation sense as well as a fiscal sense to maintain those areas. So lots of activities with the Downtown District Committee.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. President, Finance Committee met May 20th. Topics of conversation, most, number one, Village at Federal Hill project, Mr. Howard and Mr. Murray were there, presented and discussed ordinance 410521, resolution RC2121, which is on our agenda this evening. I will let them go into the depths and the detail, but this is the first step towards putting the funding in place for the project at Federal Hill, so we're starting to move ahead, and it's exciting. And this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee, but I'll allow the finance experts to discuss this in greater detail. There was an appropriation transfer for Community Engagement Manager, which is essentially Kayla moving down to planning from economic development, so we're just taking dollars out of economic development, moving them down to planning. So it's a budget-neutral situation. The Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative, which is ready, as we've all seen, the state is going to provide $500 million for ready grant planning. And as part of that, the administration, and I think wisely, has engaged a consultant to assist us with this because the timeframe for submission for the up to $50 million in the ready grants is due July 1st. So in order for us to meet that deadline, we're going to need some outside assistance to make that happen. So both of those come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. There's another appropriation transfer for compensation. It's been some time since we've done an overview of compensation across the House, and so there's a request for $65,000 to engage NFT, which you may more commonly know as First Person, to work through a study that will assess all of the different positions in the city, so we can look at competitiveness, fairness of compensation, et cetera. That also comes with a favorable recommendation. And then Mr. Spalding, Mr. Barris did a 22 revenue forecast, which from, I think, my seat and everybody else on the Finance Committee was a pleasant surprise because the numbers did not degrade as much as we thought they might have pre-COVID. So that's all good news. The one thing that will be a little odd is we got the 14-month distribution for LIT, so we'll only get 10 months in '22, but nonetheless, we've gotten the dollars and the state's revenues have continued to climb, and you probably saw that through their budget negotiations. So that's all good news. And the budget work is starting, and that should come to sometime in August for meetings, so stay tuned on that. Let's see, what else do we have? And the claims were reviewed, and they came to you with a fair... And the claims were reviewed, and they came to you with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Davis, our Chair, was enjoying some R&amp;R on Thursday, so I figured I'd just let him know that we missed him, that they...
Thank you. That's some nuts. Do we have a motion to approve the claims?
No, moved.
Second.
This is a hand vote. All is in favor? Raise your right hand. I know. Claims passed now. We'd like to hear from Mayor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. Air, those peonies are beautiful, and there's just something about Brian Air bringing flowers to the council meeting that just genuinely warms my heart. I just, I have two brief topics I would like to cover with you tonight, and I'll be brief because I know you have a lot of material to go over this evening. But first and foremost, back in March, I stood before you to review some funding dispersments from our friends at the federal government because of the ARPA Act that went through Congress. You may recall back in March, Treasury gave out an initial estimation for every city, town, county across the United States. At that time, much to personally my surprise, I do have some overall concerns about the overall, who's going to pay for this someday, but with that being said, that's another topic for another day. But Noblesville was slated to receive about $13.48 million in the ARPA funds. Now, those are coming to us from the federal government with strict guidelines from the federal government. A lot of that dealt with COVID relief, lost revenue replacement, for example, water, storm water, wastewater projects, et cetera. So we went to work diligently at that point in time to review different funding opportunities for the city. As you all know, because of the capital plan that you all have reviewed, we have a lot of infrastructure projects in the pipeline for us, a lot of which fit the needs of that bill, which was exciting. Much to my chagrin, on May 10th, Treasury gave out final guidelines for us to work from, and with that, a final allocation amount, and our dollars went from $13.48 million to $6.2 million, a loss of nearly, or over $7 million. You can imagine my shock, and we quickly went to work internally to just understand. It's one thing, in my opinion, to trim the edges. It's quite another to lose $7 million. And come to find out, in the state of Indiana, Noblesville, Carmel, and Fishers were the only communities to take such massive hits. In fact, our friends to the west of us, a city about half the size of us, will be getting $6.9 million. So we've asked a lot of questions. Our friends at the federal government, Senator Young's office, has been incredibly helpful. I believe what has happened is the original estimates had Noblesville, Carmel, and Fishers listed as a non-urban community. Treasury went to work, and our friends in Congress, and decided to shift some cities across the United States into an urban category, thus massively reducing our funding from the federal government. So we will continue to push on that. I wish I could tell you that I was met with good news on those days. I keep coming up against this wall as we go forward. We're not alone. There's roughly 100 communities across the country that have, are in the same boat as us. I want you to know again that our team will continue to be in contact with our United States delegation and Congress, trying to work through this, but in the meantime, we will go back to work and kind of reevaluate our plans for you to consider at some point in time based on that $6.2 million number. Again, that's incredibly disappointing, which is my continued thoughts on the federal government most days. So it's strictly in line with what's going on. So again, another topic for another day, but I wanted to keep you up to date on that because that is a seismic shift in some of the infrastructure improvements we are looking to make. Speaking of infrastructure improvements, I wanted to give a quick thank you to Congresswoman Sparts and her team. Several weeks ago, we had, actually several months ago, we met with some of her executive team to talk about some of the major federal projects we have coming up, first and foremost being Pleasant Street. As you well know, through this conversation, we have followed the federal review process for that major infrastructure project. Her team was exceptionally helpful to help guide us and answer some questions. They even were able to set up a meeting with us through some other agencies just to kind of review some more documentation. So I just wanted to thank her and her team. Actually, I think Landon Kellogg is in the back row back there, was on that call with us, but they were incredibly helpful and supportive of our efforts on that major project. So I just wanted, while I do have criticism with the federal government at times, I want to give credit where credit's due and say thank you to our delegation who works really tirelessly on behalf of their constituents. So I thought I'd end on a high note there, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. Seeing none, I appreciate your work tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to miscellaneous number one. Council to hear a semi-handing report from Noblesville Main Street. Lorna Oskue.
Mr. Yost is in the back in case you need IT help. Oh, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. My name is Lorna Oskue. I am at 839 Connor Street. First, just want to thank you all for allowing me to be here, my board members who are here and staff who have taken time out of their, out of their day to be here to support Main Street. We are super excited to be here for, just to let you know what we've been doing in 2020 and everything in 2021. You have a packet with all the slides, our event calendar, and some other goodies we have for you, so just stop me at any point if you have any question, and if not, we'll rock and roll. Well, we made it, 2021. Here we are. I'm here to tell you a little bit about how Noblesville Main Street came alongside our great downtown and how we overcame the challenges of last year. First, I wanted to personally and publicly thank all of you and the administration for the Downtown Small Business Resilient Grants that truly played a huge role in sustaining our great downtown. From all of us at Noblesville Main Street, myself, our board, our staff, everyone downtown, I thank you so much for investing in the success of our downtown. We are truly, truly blessed to serve this great downtown and the city alongside all of you. First, I wanted to briefly, briefly go over the details of the partnership that we have here for 2021 with the City of Noblesville. We have received in cash $15,000 from the city, and then in-kind support, approximately $28,000 in manpower, which is street department, police, and fire for our events, approximately $18,000 for the use of Federal Hill Commons for 24 weeks out of the year, and approximately $17,760 for the use of our office space at 839 Connor. In exchange, we activate the downtown with new and current events, which we'll get to a little later. We execute the farmer's market, which is focused on local and organic food for the Noblesville community. We advocate on behalf of the merchant community, seek new businesses to fill downtown and retail space, and further diversify the city's economic base. We identify and apply for grants, which we'll get to again in a little bit, and provide cultural, historical, and community service programs to Noblesville, and assist the city in exceeding economic development and tourism goals. So 2020 was a monumental change for everybody, and so Noblesville Main Street really took that opportunity to work on a new strategic plan that is in the final review stages. We also started to restructure our committees, consulted with our state agency, and really wanted to see what worked for our community the best. We went from four committees to six, and so we currently are operating the Economic Development Committee, the Promotions Committee, the Development Committee, marketing, finance, and of course, our executive team. Also wanted to get in a little bit of a deep dive here. Here's a revenue shot, a snapshot of, that just really shows how we have consistently been able to leverage the city's in-kind and financial support to diversify our revenue streams and be able to continually reinvest in our downtown. So yeah, when you're looking, pretty self-explanatory, I will point out that I started in 2018. So I had a great year in 2018, a big increase in 2019, then of course, saw that decrease in 2020. One thing to note about the 2020 total earned figure is that it did not include our PPP grant support, so that's a little asterisk down below that we'll go over, like I said, a little in a few slides. Although I could stand up here all night and talk about our great city and all the things that Main Street does and has planned for downtown, I just wanted to do a couple case studies here, and one of the ones that I want to start with is Small Business Saturday. We pulled together, probably like in June or July, started talking to the merchants about how imperative this Small Business Saturday was going to be. That's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. We, I called, I called up Bob from the chamber, Ailey, Kayla at the city, and everyone else all in one place to really start brainstorming about how we can make this Small Business Saturday extremely impactful. And it worked. We ended up planning an all-day virtual event, which was hugely successful, and we launched an online marketplace. We also had gift cards we were giving out for people to exclusively use in downtown businesses that day as well. Overall, we reached 20,000 potential visitors and targeted social media advertising across all of central Indiana. This was really cool because everyone who grew up here or has visited here but lives in other states was able to tune in, shop, and visit and support our local businesses here, which was huge. Downtown businesses noted that this was their best weekend of 2020. The quote, there's a direct quote that says, "One of the reasons we made it through." The next case study I want to take a look at really quick is our farmer's market from last year. As you can imagine, in March, when the pandemic hit and our market was a few weeks away, we were all scrambling and not quite sure what we were going to do, but knew it was imperative that we did all we can to not only keep our community safe, but to support our local businesses and vendors, and ensure that our community still had a place to acquire fresh fruits and produce. I've always loved our farmer's market, but unlike most things, the pandemic actually made me love it more. Noblesville Main Street was able to provide something that we all desperately needed while supporting those who were hit hardest by the COVID-19. So we had 24 markets, which was something we thought we might have to shorten our season. We didn't. We executed all 24 weeks. We held an average of weekly attendance of 4,000 people. We were able to socially distance, fit in 70 vendors in the Federal Hill Commons, which was fantastic. And then we had 47 booth spaces that were donated to nonprofits so they could have a chance to get in front of the public, raise some money on their own. Many of our vendors saw record sales during the farmer's market season. It truly was the reason they stayed, were able to stay afloat through this tough time. One quick example I always like to talk about is Noblesville Main Street went to our downtown businesses and said, "If you want a space at the farmer's market for as long as you need it, let us know. We'll give it to you for free." We had Ninth Street Bistro take us up on our deal. They wanted to open ideally in the spring of 2020, and COVID really put a damper on that. So we gave them a tent, we sent them up at the farmer's market, and they were hugely successful. They not only were able to get in front of people, let all the community know that they were coming, they also sold delicious Nutella muffins and started their Sunday supper club, which has sustained them through this whole year. So yeah, it was just an incredible experience, and like just that we were able to come alongside businesses and ensure that they were able to make it through the pandemic. This is a graph going by the numbers of the farmer's market, basically our revenue compared to our expenses. Yeah, as you can see, again, I started in 2018. We had a revenue of $42,035. What went up a little bit in 2019, saw a slight decrease in 2020 just due to the lack of sponsorships and dollars that were available there, but are way on track to surpass 2019 numbers this year. So overall, in 2020, we focused on three main things: public outreach, merchant support, and square activation. Public outreach really was to draw visitors into downtown. How do we make people know how to support downtown, that business, that we're open for business? We did that through launching a newsletter, an email newsletter that goes out every month and then forecasts the next month and the month after that. We have over 2,000 subscribers, direct subscribers through email, which is awesome. We also have over 18,000 followers on social media. We saw a huge engagement increase on social media as we did virtual events as well. Merchant support, we wanted to do anything we could to make the merchants, their life even 10% easier. So we did, one of the examples that we did, we did complimentary branded COVID signage so that the merchant didn't have to go and try and find decals or how to stick them or where to order them or how big they were. We set everything up with the printer, and all they had to do was make a call and get it delivered. Sorry, this looks a little different. Now, it's in PowerPoint, not Canva. Your copy should be perfect. So square activation, we really wanted to foster a safe environment for our downtown events. We still were able to execute 37 free, family-friendly events, thus just driving the overall economic impact in downtown Noblesville. So as we look at 2021, one initiative that stands out kind of above the rest is that we are really wanting to prepare our merchants and our downtown for growth. Although the Streetscape project has been postponed, this is still a top priority for Noblesville Main Street. We really are focused on creating a positive synergy in advance of all the downtown projects that are coming and the Streetscape when it does happen. Also, all the development west of the river as far as the farmer's market and things like that, we want our merchants to be engaged and really included on creating a positive narrative for all of that. So how we're doing it, I think most of you probably know, but we started implementing and managing the Streetscape Advocacy Group. This, of course, with the project postponement, we're going to kind of re-shift here, pivot is the word, of 2020 and 2021, I guess, but we're going to keep the group together. We have a meeting actually tomorrow to kind of see the frequency of meetings. How can we keep this group of people very involved in constantly creating a positive narrative around construction projects and things that are going around on in our downtown? I would be greatly remiss if I did not mention the generous financial support that we are awarded in 2020 and so far in 2021. In addition to the crucial support from the City of Noblesville, Main Street has made use of grants from the Payment Protection Plan, the Hamilton County Community Foundation. Hey, guys, didn't know you were going to be here today. How fun. For the farmer's market of the SNAP program, which enables people to use their SNAP benefits at our farmer's market, kind of like just to ensure that everybody who's food insecure is able to come to the market and use those benefits. And then OKRA awarded us $5,000 as a nationally accredited Main Street program for COVID relief. Have a quick video from them that I want to show you. They were going to be here today but are still on COVID restrictions as far as traveling goes.
I'm the Indiana Main Street Coordinator.
And I'm Abby Chapman, Indiana Main Street Manager of Outreach and Organization. We're here today on behalf of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs to congratulate Noblesville Main Street on their 2021 national accreditation by Main Street America.
Okay, sorry, just realized I can't see it. You got it.
This designation is very exclusive and absolutely deserves recognition, so we're so glad to be able to have a moment of your time today. A little background to demonstrate just how significant this designation is. In November of 2020, OKRA launched a brand-new level system for the Indiana Main Street program. These levels were designed to more closely align local programs with the standards of accreditation set forth by the National Main Street Center, which is time-tested framework for community-driven, comprehensive revitalization. Prior to this Noblesville, Indiana had 140 designated Main Street programs. After Main Street America evaluated those programs, only 40 remained accredited. Of those 40 accredited programs, only 16 were designated as nationally accredited. Noblesville was one of the few programs in the state who retained their national accreditation because of their demonstrated leadership and innovation. So we asked to be here today to congratulate Noblesville Main Street on their hard work and success. Indiana Main Street is consistently looking to Noblesville as a prime model of Main Street success in the state. They flourished in areas of economic vitality, place attachment and placemaking, promotion of the downtown's unique assets, and most significantly, they serve as a connector of partners and people. These efforts are what catalyze long-term community revitalization and instill community pride in the heart of downtown. Lorna has been an incredibly valuable partner to Indiana Main Street, OKRA, and Main Street America, serving as a mentor for other Main Street leaders in Indiana. She's also been instrumental in the development of community resources at the state level, including working closely with state interns on projects related to Main Street. We at Indiana Main Street and OKRA wholeheartedly support Noblesville Main Street, and that's why we selected them as a recipient of our Taking Care of Main Street grant last year to help sustain their organization throughout the pandemic. Ultimately, we recognize that with Noblesville Main Street's Ultimately, we recognize that with Noblesville Main Street's presence in the downtown community, Noblesville and Indiana are both better off than they would be without them. Through their national accreditation, Noblesville Main Street has direct access to resources from Indiana Main Street, OKRA, and Main Street America. We look forward to continuing our work with Noblesville Main Street to provide technical assistance, local capacity building, leadership development, support through advocacy at the federal, state, and local levels, grant funding, and so much more in the years to come. So thank you, council members, for your time today. We hope that you take a moment to celebrate the hard work of Noblesville Main Street. We can say for certain that the state of Indiana is grateful for their outstanding leadership and innovation in the state.
So next, I just want to provide you with a quick snapshot of the successes we have already seen yet this year in 2021. The biggest thing that we have seen and have started is our farmer's market. We're just finished the fourth week, and it is awesome. We have a total of 85 vendors, and that's pretty much maxed out. They are using 98 total spaces at Federal Hill Commons. We have a waiting list of 20 vendors, and those are people we pull from if a vendor has to miss a week or if some vendors have to drop out for some reason. And we, at this time, have 27 spaces reserved for nonprofits. That will continue to rise as we can squeeze any awesome nonprofits in our market as possible. We had a record opening day. Usually, June and July are the heights of our farmer's market, but May has been awesome. If you've even driven in downtown on Saturday, you know the farmer's market's going on, which is something we super love. We have lots of energy. It's great to see everybody out there. And most of our vendors are selling out of stuff, which, as running the market, is really great for me and great for them because they're making a lot of money and people are supporting their small businesses. So it's been great. We're conservatively back to our regular event calendar, which you have in your packet. So June, we have Block Party, which is a rebrand kind of our street dance. We really wanted to be sensitive of the current pandemic that's still very much in our country, in our world, and so we kind of have toned it down a little bit, shortened it. We have a flyer for it, too, as well. It'll be June, next Saturday, which is insane to me. July, the Duck Race will be back. Noblesville, I mean, in November, of course, we'll have Small Business Saturday. December, Santa House, and just Duck the Town Downtown when we just rally all the awesome stuff that everyone's doing for the holidays. Ongoing events that we continue to have, the farmer's market, like I mentioned, runs through October 9th. And then all of our First Friday Stuff Fest, such as Music and All That Jazz, Chocolate Trail Fall Fest, Flannel Fest, again, those are all on your event calendars that you have. And then we have coming collaborations. This is probably one of my favorite parts of my job, and it's really all about equipping passionate community members to make a positive impact in our community. Like Megan said about the Peony Festival, Kelly and I got connected years, like a few years ago, and she told me about this crazy idea she had, and I was like, "Let's do it. I love it. Like, let's make it happen." And it happened on Saturday, and it was better than I think anybody could have ever imagined. I'm also working with a resident on a front porch festival idea that he has on Logan Street, so stay tuned for more to come on that. And these are a few members of our Main Street family for 2021. This list is ever-expanding, but one we are extremely grateful for and blessed, of course, the city of Noblesville, community first, Bashing Solutions, Mybo, Realtor Association, Riverview, of course, Saxne, Calo, and Bex, it's a really cool project we're working on with them. They're going to be at our market on June 12th, which will be awesome. Even just this week, I could have added a ton more to the slide, but we are just so thankful and blessed that we serve a community who wants to be involved in making our downtown even greater. So with that, really concludes my presentation for this evening. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I'll just say congratulations on the accreditation and the wonderful comments in the video.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah, my business card is included in your packet, so if you have any questions later or just haven't had a chance to sit down, sit down with me. Please reach out. I'd love to speak with you. Thanks, everyone.
I just wanted to say just congratulations also just on the collaboration between the city. It really is almost poetry to see how this all worked through a pandemic and kept going, kept thriving, and that's just great leadership, and that's just community involvement, volunteers to everybody, just great work.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lorna.
Okay, moving on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance 310521 and ordinance to modify the uniform development ordinance regarding Section 8 zoning districts to create a State Road 32 overlay Phase 1. David Herschel.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. This proposed ordinance was introduced at the May 11 council meeting. It's an ordinance to create a zoning overlay district along State Road 32 west of Cherry That's a 2.9-mile distance to the Western Planning Jurisdiction boundary at Gray Road. The intent of the ordinance, as you remember, is to drive a consistent character along corridor and introduce traffic safety improvements and pedestrian efficiency movements. It would do this through built environment controls on the site design and building design for individual parcels. So we received several comments in soon two weeks from council members and a couple of developers, and they have resulted in four changes to the ordinance that you saw on May 11th. I'm going to show you the specific ordinance wording changes, but then I'll explain it for you. This first one's hard to follow. In fact, if you can focus on this and understand the changes, I think you deserve an award. So the first change, the proposed ordinance put a square footage maximum on any building in the corridor, and it was observed that, or suggested that, a building could exceed the maximum square footage but be designed so that it looks like two separate, smaller buildings. That's one example. Another example would be like a use locating adjacent to Midland Trace. Perhaps it's a smaller use, like a bike repair shop, something like that, that doesn't require the minimum 5,000 square feet that was in the ordinance. So the summary for what you see here is to give the plan commission and/or the council the flexibility to adjust those maximum square footage building sizes or minimums on a case-by-case basis. So because each development along the corridor would have to go through plan development, this gives either the plan commission or the council flexibility to adjust those square footages. That's what that section does. The second change came about with the suggestion that provision of bicycle parking spaces by a vendor, I'm sorry, by a business could reduce the number of vehicular parking spaces in the parking lot. Not by a whole bunch, but any use in the corridor, not just along the Midland Trace, but any use in the corridor, if providing four or more, four parking spaces, they could reduce one required vehicular parking space by, or just reduce that total number by one parking space. So you provide four bicycle parking spaces, you can reduce the number of vehicular parking spaces you're required to provide by one, up to a maximum of only five reduced parking spaces. So it's not a great deal. We also define the minimum area of a bicycle parking space and try to eliminate some pedestrian conflicts with that language. The third change involves drive-through lanes. The original ordinance that you saw prohibited drive-through lanes between the State Road 32 right-of-way and the nearest building facade to the State Road 32 right-of-way. So we've taken that treatment and applied it to Midland Trace. In other words, there would be no drive-through lanes on the facades between Midland Trace boundary and the nearest, that nearest facade. In other words, the drive-through lanes would be on the sides of buildings or the east and west sides of buildings, if you were. So you'd be looking, wouldn't be looking at their length, but looking at their width. Last change involves uses along Midland Trace. The original intent was to prevent long building facades along the trace to avoid walling in trail users. So we limited originally the longest facade that could be along Midland Trace to 80 feet in length, and it was pointed out that we're trying to promote townhomes along Midland Trace, and so we changed that 80-square-foot maximum wall length and made it applicable only to non-residential uses. So those are the four changes proposed, and that's the conclusion. I do understand that these changes may be significant enough to send it back to the plan commission for ratification.
Thank you, Mr. Herschel. I know this is a lot of work, and I appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
You fielded my 8,000 comments quite well, and I appreciate the changes you've made, I think, really bring it alongside, and I appreciate that you reached out to some developers and some people are looking at projects, and it didn't seem to be an encumbrance but more of an enhancement of the entire corridor. So I really appreciate this effort.
Sure.
Do you have any comments?
I had a question, Mr. President. David, if you go back to the second to the last, the drive-through, can you put that back up?
Sure.
I'm kind of a visual learner, so I'm trying to comprehend.
Intent seems to be that the drive-throughs not only cannot face 32, so you don't have cars stacked up, but they also cannot face the Midland Trail, so you don't have cars stacked up, people trying to walk pedestrian-friendly.
I can give you a visual. McDonald's on Connor Street has its drive-through lane along the southern facade, and you see the entire drive-through lane.
Right.
We're trying to turn that 90 degrees.
90, okay, perpendicular.
Yep.
Okay. I'm with you.
Well, if the drive-through's on 37, then would be like this, because I can't think of any that aren't, you don't see any then like you do on Connor.
Right.
Chick-fil-A is perpendicular at 37.
Other than, in this case, they couldn't face Monday Drive.
Couldn't face Midland in the back, yeah.
Is it Monday Drive? Couldn't face 37 or Monday Drive in this case.
Any other comments? If there are other comments, could I have a motion to amend ordinance 310521?
President, I would move that we amend ordinance number 31-05-21 as presented.
Second. There's a motion to amend ordinance 310521 and a second. This is a hand vote. All of us in favor of amending, raise your right hand. I know.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve ordinance number 31-05-21 as amended.
Second. There's a motion to approve ordinance 310521 as amended, and a second is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 320521 an amendment to adopted ordinance 28997 for Prairie Lakes Plan Development Regarding Canopies for Jagger's Restaurant at 14570 Monday Drive, Joyce Ann Yelton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This item, as you may recall, is an amendment to the Prairie Lakes Plan Development Ordinance to allow the Jagger's Restaurant to install canopies at their drive-through location as well as on the building. It did come to you from the Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation for adoption.
Any questions? Senator Lake, would like to add anything?
Good evening. I'm Chris Bell. I'm with Jagger's in Texas Roadhouse, so just here to answer questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Seeing that, I have a motion to approve.
Mr. President, I'll move that we approve ordinance 32-05-21 as presented.
Second. There's a motion to approve ordinance 320521 and a second. This is also a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Council to consider ordinance 330521 and ordinance for a change of zoning from sub-district professional office to sub-district West Logan Street corridor, a part of the Federal Hill Plan Development District south of Osborne Street between John and Nixon Streets and north of State Road 32, Westfield Road. Joyce Ann Yelton.
Again, this is a change of the underlying zoning district or sub-district for the Federal Hill Plan Development Area. We want to change it from what is professional office to the Logan Street District. The Logan Street District would allow multifamily residential uses. Most of the other uses, if you compare the two, are very similar in nature.
Any questions? Ms. Shelton.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I would move that we approve ordinance 33-05-21 as presented.
Second. Pre-ordance 330521 and a second is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Eyre.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 340521 an ordinance for a cut-and-fill in the FH flood hazard district and the adoption of a preliminary development plan for the village of Federal Hill, a part of the Federal Hill Plan Development District south of Logan Street, east of Nixon Street, and a part of Federal Hill Commons. Joyce Ann Yelton.
This is an amendment to the Federal Hill, the Federal Hill Plan Development Area. It currently is the parking lot for the Federal Hill Commons. This obviously being the service parking lot that currently contains 93 parking spaces. The proposal is to change that site into a multi-tenant building for apartments. There will also be commercial on the ground floor, and internal to the site will be a parking garage. It is a five-story building. It is, again, surrounded by apartments and commercial uses. There will be approximately 126 apartment units. They will be consisting of studio, one bedroom and two bedrooms, approximately 7,000 square feet of commercial area, and roughly 300 parking spaces within the parking garage. Again, once the parking garage is completed, it will be owned and operated by the city of Noblesville. The comp plan did indicate this area as being downtown, which should provide for a mixture of residential, commercial, and employment opportunities plus entertainment. The streets that abut this project are either primary arterials or they are state highways. There were waivers listed within the ordinance as proposed. Again, this did come to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption of their preliminary development plan as well as any waivers. In the audience with you this evening, if you have any specific questions or representatives from Old Town as well as their attorney.
Any questions for Ms. Shelton or the petition?
I don't have any questions for them. I just have a comment. I know we talked about it last week. I just want to thank Mr. Hampton and Old Town for the effort to fully wrap the parking garage. I think the final product looks really sharp, and that's going to make a big difference, especially along Logan Street. So I appreciate the effort that everybody played in that.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor.
Joyce Ann, I may have asked you this the last time, but is there a Loma involved in this?
No.
There is not?
There is not.
I just wondered from a time standpoint. So since it's being raised out of the floodplain, that eliminates the need for the...
They are actually, we are, okay, so within our ordinance, we allow for a cut-and-fill operation. Typically, the cut-and-fill operation has to be, meet certain standards. In this case, although there is a small cut-and-fill operation being done to stabilize what is the building, there will not be a Loma. What we are doing is actually waiving some of those requirements that are specific to that cut-and-fill operation.
Not a loss of cap and storage area of storage.
Correct. Correct.
President?
Yeah.
Is it one more for the petitioner, a point of clarification on the, I heard some constituents ask me about public restrooms and whether or not, where are they because of the floodplain? And if you could just maybe just sort of explain that, just for the public record.
Sure, thank you. For the record, Jim Schenover, an attorney with the law firm of Nelson and Frankenberger. What I may do regarding the public restroom question is if I could ask Eric Dirks to also approach. Eric is with Old Town Companies, one of their in-house engineers, and he can provide you a more detailed answer to that particular question.
Hey, Eric Dirks with Old Town Companies. The public restrooms are located in the east side of the building, elevated at the first finish floor. There you go. Right there. There will be a series of accessible ramps and stairs to get to the public restrooms that are set at 100-year base flood elevation plus two vertical feet. So they are actually elevated out of the floodplain, where the current restroom building today is down inside the floodplain. Does that answer your question?
It does, exactly.
We saw it on a plane last week. It wasn't labeled, so thank you.
There's also some city park and recreation offices in that same area, also elevated out of the floodplain.
Okay, that's all I want to just clarify. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd move that we approve ordinance 34-05-21 as presented.
Second.
Been a motion to approve ordinance 3405-21, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Counsel to consider ordinance 3505-21 an ordinance for a change of zoning for a cut-and-fill in the FH flood hazard district located south of State Road 32, Connor Street, north of Maple Avenue, and east of White River. Oh, Joyce Ann Yelton.
Again.
Surprise.
Surprise, surprise.
I'm not left yet. The area in question is basically, again, bound up by Maple Street, Sixth Street, Connor Street, and White River. The area specific, specifically that we're dealing with is the area that is in the flood hazard district. And as you can see, it takes in a portion of property that does extend from Maple Street up to Connor Street. This area is being rezoned from what will eventually be flood hazard to downtown as this group is seeking a letter of map revision.
Revision.
And we have already signed the paperwork for them to continue their process with FEMA.
Do you have estimate how much time the Loma will be done?
That's kind of tough to say.
It won't delay the project?
No, no, we should be fine. Because they have actually been working with FEMA for quite some time, long before they actually started the process with the Plan Commission, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Are none? Could I have a motion on this item? I move to approve ordinance number 35-05-21 as presented.
Second.
Your motion to approve ordinance 3505-21, and a second, is a roll call vote.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Counsel to consider ordinance 3605-21 an ordinance for a change of zoning to DMU, Downtown Mixed Use, and adoption of a detailed development plan to be known as the East Bank Mixed Use south of State Road 32, Connor Street, west of South Sixth Street, north of Maple Avenue, and east of White River. Joyce Ann Yelton.
Again, this is the same area that we just spoke about. What we are doing here is basically adopting their development plan. This happens to be just a portion of their, this is their landscaping plan. As you may recall, this, again, is a mixed-use development. It will contain some commercial uses funding along Connor Street. There are apartments here, apartment units here, and internal to the apartments, again, is a parking garage. This is basically a parking garage that will be used mostly by the tenants. There are, I don't know, I think roughly 20 or 25 parking spaces that will be designated to others. There is on-street parking, not on Connor Street, but on what I'm going to say is Maple Avenue here. Again, here is a south elevation view of that building. As you can see, there is a connector between the two buildings. So if I live in apartments on the east side, I can still get to the apartments on the west side. Again, this item did come to you with a favorable recommendation for adoption. And if you have any specific questions, in the audience are representatives from J.C. Hart and from Weaver Sherman.
Any questions for Joyce Ann or the petitioner? The petitioner like to add anything? Don't have to. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve ordinance 36-05-21 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 3605-21, and a second, is a roll call vote.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Counsel to consider ordinance 3705-21 an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance regarding Appendix F, Noblesville Construction Standards, Joyce Ann Yelton.
Again, this is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to update our existing construction standards for what be, would be infrastructure such as roads, sanitary storm sewers, sidewalks, ADA ramps, manholes, pipe sizes, grease traps. There are many, many more things that are included. Again, these have not been updated since 2008. Most of the information that has been updated has, is based on industry standards or practices that we have implemented. And again, I will ask if you have any questions. If you have any specific questions, our city engineer is here.
My only comment was this seemed to be just recognizing new methods and materials and didn't necessarily, wasn't an encumbrance or new encumbrances on construction companies, but just a recognition of some new techniques and practices.
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. O'Connor?
I move that we approve ordinance 37-05-21 as presented.
Second.
The motion to approve ordinance 3705-21, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance 3805-21 an ordinance creating the Noblesville Wheel Tax Fund and imposing a municipal wheel tax. Matt Light?
Thank you, President Peterson, members of the council. For the record, I'm Matt Light, deputy mayor. This is the proposed wheel tax ordinance that would provide a significant step towards funding the Pleasant Street project. As you know, this is Mayor Jensen's number-one infrastructure priority. Since this was introduced and first read on the 11th, we received two comments in the mayor's office about this proposal. One was in favor, one was opposed. But we have continued to receive, on many platforms, messages of support for the Pleasant Street project. And that's only served to reinforce our commitment to moving it forward. As you know, this has been discussed in Noblesville since 1987. It's been on the city's thoroughfare plan since 1995. And the mayor has been resolute in his commitment to not delay the project any longer and to not pass it on to future generations. So we respectfully request your support of this funding mechanism so that we can move this project forward.
Any comments for Matt Light? Mr. Light? Mr. Eyre?
Quick question. Mr. Light, who sets this rate of $25?
So this is set by state statute. If a local unit selects this option for funding road projects, then they can, they have to include all of the categories of vehicles that are subject to the state excise tax. And it's up to the maximum that's included in the ordinance.
And if the ability to change that would doubt after legislative approval?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Light? If there are none, I have a petition to speak from Mike Corbett. State your name and address.
Mike Corbett, excuse me. Mike Corbett, I live at 498 South Tenth Street. I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak. I stood here before you, before expressing my disapproval of this project. And I haven't changed my mind on that, and I won't rehash that, other than to say I just believe that it's not too late to change your minds on this thing. We haven't destroyed anything yet. And although I know we're getting to the point where it's going to be too late to go back, I still believe it's a bad idea. But presuming that we're going to move ahead with it, I would also like to express my dismay at this method of funding it. The idea of a wheel tax is being touted as a user fee. However, the people who use this are not going to be paying it. It's a broad-based tax. Everybody who owns a car is going to be paying for this, whether they use it or not. And worse, people, many people who are going to be using it, those people who are just driving through town, won't be paying at all. So the local residents are being asked to fund this road that is really for many other people to use. So in light of that, I would like to suggest that you consider making this a toll road. And although on the face of it, it seems kind of ludicrous for a local jurisdiction to run a toll road, really, it doesn't seem, if you stop and think about it, to be all that outrageous. For one thing, the road has a beginning and an end, so you'll know when you're on it. And secondly, tolling technology has come so far, and it's really being implemented in many new and creative ways. I'm sure you've all, well, maybe you haven't, but if you've driven down to Louisville and you've crossed that bridge, a month later, you get a bill in the mail. I mean, they know that you're driving your car. They take a picture of your license plate in the billia. It's easy enough to toll people, and it would be a much fairer way to fund this road. Seems to me that if people were willing to pay a toll, if people want to get through Noblesville quickly, more quickly, save a couple of minutes, they might be willing to pay a toll to do that. It's time for some innovative thinking. Noblesville has a very high tax rate. We're one of the highest tax rates in the county. In addition, we have some unpopular trash fees and so forth that continue to go up. At some point, there must be a point where it becomes economically dangerous to be having such a high tax rate in that it's a discouragement for businesses coming into town. So the way I figure it, if about 10,000 vehicles use this bypass every day and we're willing to pay a dollar apiece to use it, we could pay off this road in 30 years, just through tolling, just by everybody paying their fair share. So it's a little bit of an unusual suggestion, but I would encourage you to consider it. I think it's a much fairer way to pay for this road. Thank you.
Just to comment, if I could, Mr. President. To me, Mr. Corbett, respectfully, a toll road, to me, would have people, it would defeat the purpose because people would avoid the road, because it's not just a one-trip. You don't go there just one time in a day and pay your dollar. I might be on that road 15 times in one day. So I would be charged $15 daily to that road. So my thought, just a reaction to your idea, and I do appreciate you looking into it and thinking about it and your community activism that you are, I appreciate all that. But I'm just thinking, I think it would defeat the purpose of the road because people would avoid the toll. And that's just my opinion.
Any other comments?
But thank you for speaking.
Thank you. There are none. I would need a motion on this item.
President?
Yes.
I would move that we approve ordinance 38-05-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve ordinance 3805-21, and a second, this is a roll call vote.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 3905-21 an ordinance creating the Noblesville Surtax Fund and imposing a motor vehicle license excise surtax. Mr. Light?
Thank you, President Peterson. Council members, this is the sister ordinance, if you will, to the previous one. As was stated previously, state law requires that local units that elect to exercise this funding method have to adopt both the municipal excise surtax and the wheel tax. And they're required to be done in separate ordinances and be maintained in separate funds. The proceeds are required to be maintained in separate funds. We scrutinized a number of different funding mechanisms and options and strategies for this, for this project, with Mr. Howard, Mr. Spalding, Ms. Kropsky, and many others. And we strongly believe that this is one of the most appropriate funding mechanisms, considering a number to fund this project and move it forward. So we respectfully request your support of this proposal.
Any questions?
Peterson?
Fair.
Not really a question, but an observation. I don't take lightly imposing a tax surcharge, whatever you want to call it. But I've heard about this road for 30 years, and probably the only other person that's heard about it more than I have is Mr. Howard sitting over there. And when I first, I think, eight years ago, when there was initial cost estimates, it was $65 million. Our initial cost estimates right now are $113 million. I don't know what it's going to be if we keep delaying this and delaying this and delaying this. I do believe in the route. I'm not jumping up and down about the route change we had to make, but we have to do it, and we're doing it. And I think it's time to get this, get the shovel on the ground, and let's get this road built.
Thank you, Mr. Eyre. Any other comments?
You're here. I agree.
I just have one, adding to Mr. Eyre's point. One of the things that I learned in this process was, I went through the studies on the Pleasant Street website, and the one from 1999 said, although it's somewhat of a different route, it said that it would have cost just under $11 million. Again, you know, to your point, what's the cost of inaction? And I think that it shows. So if it's something that had to happen in the, or was it something, we were studying in the '80s, '90s, 2000s, 2010, 2020, I would imagine that in 2030, we're still going to be, it's still going to be an issue, right? And so what is the cost of inaction, I guess, is the biggest thing that we need to weigh.
President, I would just say that I concur with my colleagues on their comments. And the other thing to think about is, this will generate $1.8 to $2 million in revenue. The fact of the matter is, that only services 25% of the debt. So we're trying to do this in a fashion that's fair. Everybody that owns a car, I think to Mr. Hampton's point, you're going to be on this road, and it's a necessity for the growth and for business growth. I mean, without the road, you can't, you have no connectivity. And it's to the point where, as Mr. Smith articulated, this is 22 years. point where, as Mr. Smith articulated, this is 22 years, and probably longer, because Commissioner Dillinger's been talking about a bridge over White River for 30. So the cost of inaction is what we just, what we're looking at from a dollar standpoint. It's over $100 million, and it's not going down. I think we've all seen the cost of construction, and it continues to escalate. So I don't think we have a choice. We've got to move forward with this, and it's been a priority. It has been one of mine for a period, for quite a while. It needs to happen. So kudos for bringing this forward, but it's just a piece of the financing puzzle. This isn't the end of the road. So nobody likes to have to pay, but if you want the connectivity, and I think most people in the city want to be able to traverse from east to west, so that's the purpose, and I think it's a right thing to do, and it's time to move ahead.
Mr. President, and I'll echo again what my colleagues here are saying about the, none of us like to add any tax. I mean, every one of us, up here, Republican conservatives that do not like the T-word, hate it, do not want to do it. But if any of us have ever driven east to west in this community the last year or so, and try to get anywhere, you can't do it. So yes, progress has happened, growth has come to our community, which we all love and embrace, and we need to do something to help get this road started. 30 years of inactivity, we're seeing the brunt of it now, and it's time, and I applaud this administration for saying, you know what, we got to put a stake in the ground and a shovel in the dirt and get going.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
I would make a motion that we approve.
Can I make my comment?
Sure, go right ahead.
Sorry, don't mean to cut you off. But even if we're not on Pleasant Street, and Pleasant Street isn't affected, it is a whole network of systems. And I had the opportunity to speak to Westfield on how their 32-road project affects us. I think this Pleasant Street project can back up almost to Westfield sometimes. I sit on my front porch and watch people dart off of Connor Street, down Brick Street, and they're all connected and interrelated. So I think that's something important, too, that this isn't just about Pleasant Street, but the whole system and the whole network needs some relief. Sorry, interrupting.
My apologies. I didn't mean to interrupt. I'd make a motion that we approve ordinance 39-05-21 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve ordinance 39-05-21, and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 40, this is new ordinances now, counsel to consider ordinance 40-05-21, and ordinance amending chapters 72 and 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Noblesville. Moved to introduce.
Second.
Allison Kropsky.
Sorry, I kind of jumped the gun on that one. I have a map up here, and so as you all know, the county is about to undergo the construction of their new parking garage. We are working very closely with them on that, and while we were discussing it, it came to our attention that the area on Clinton Street between 8th and 9th Street would need to be closed, and because of that, we will lose some permit parking spaces there. And so we have to be able to accommodate that in other areas. So we are proposing to accommodate this permit parking between 9th and 10th now on Clinton Street. And so those are the changes that are being made to, and the map is up there. So the area circled, the black area is what we're going to have closed, and then the area just...
To the east?
Thank you. The area just to the east is going to be where we're going to put those permit parking spots. Again, this is, the construction is going to happen very soon, so we'd like to kind of forego the next couple readings and hope to get this passed on this first reading, so that it is an enforceable action that we can take. We've communicated with the police department on this, and they're aware of it, and we recommend that you approve this ordinance change.
Peterson? Yeah?
Currently on Clinton Street at 10th, on the south side. Is that a no parking area currently?
So people do park there.
Isn't there a sign that says no parking on that?
Yes, but people do sometimes do that, yes. But the permit spaces will only be in the allowable parking areas that are...
Are you going to extend your parking up further up Clinton?
We shouldn't have to extend it. We do not plan on extending that.
Thank you.
And it's only half of that?
Yes.
That block, right? That's...
That's existing.
And these are not the general citywide parking, these are specific to this area, permits to this...
These will be permit spaces, yes. Right now, though, it is free parking, so those will be transferred to permit parking, and then they'll be free on nights and weekends.
I'm sorry, I meant the parking spaces, the permit spots that we are moving are specific to that permitted area.
Yes.
Okay, they're not festival spots.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yes?
I would just make the comment that for the people that have purchased those permits, they need to have a place to be able to park.
Yes, and we want to, yeah, we want to make sure they have those when those spots get closed.
Right. And then, once the garage is open and construction is complete, will those permit spots still be?
Revert back, yes. We will, this is temporary. I did not mention that. This is just a temporary action. So we'll have to update the traffic code at that time as well.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Air?
I would wait. Motion that we waive the rules and pass 40-05-21 on first reading.
There's a motion to waive the rules and approve ordinance 40-05 on the first reading, and a second, this is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Randomous vote, that passes.
Peterson?
Yes, Mr. Air?
I would motion that we approve 40-05-21.
Second. There's a motion to approve ordinance 40-05-21, and a second. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Hampton?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel to consider ordinance 41-05-21, and ordinance authorizing the City of Noblesville, Indiana to issue its taxable economic development revenue bond, Series 2021 Old Town Project, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Mr. Howard, moved to introduce.
Second.
This is going to be a long series of approvals to come before you, the Redevelopment Commission, the Economic Development Commission, Community Development Commission concerning the villages at Federal Hill Project. If you recall back in August of last year, you approved a development agreement with Old Town Development and Mr. Justin Moffett concerning development of this site. This is the first of those approvals to come before you. Essentially, to refresh your recollection, there are, this project will be on either side of Nixon Street, south of Logan, north of Connor Street. The eastern part of the project will be the area outlined in orange, where the parking garage and the building that you approved, excuse me, that you approved for zoning earlier this evening. On the other side of the street, you have, there was an old house in this corner. There's a vacant space here. We had the lovely purple restaurant that's been demolished, and of course, Wendy's. Pursuant to the development agreement, there was an agreement to issue $5.2 million of taxable TIF bonds to provide assistance to the developer for this project. The taxable only goes as to the interest on the bonds. Essentially, these are developer-backed bonds with no risk to the city. The tax increment from the east allocation area that we'll talk about in one of the next items, and the tax increment from the western area will be the sole city's contribution to the project, and the rest of it will be at the developer's risk. Again, there'll be no recourse on these. In the development agreement, it talked about $5.2 million worth of bonds. This ordinance allows those to be issued in two series, and part of the things we've been doing with the developer in the meantime is working through some of these issues. So the first series will be issued to cover the eastern, part of the cost of the eastern project, and then next year, there will be an additional series to cover the western side of the project. Again, this ordinance is before you, the first reading, and will be back before you, along with several other items that we need approval at your next meeting. And I'll stop and answer any questions on this ordinance.
Questions for Mr. Howard? Hearing none, we will see you back in two weeks, three weeks.
We'll see you back in two items.
Yeah, we'll see you here in a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, miscellaneous number two. Counsel to consider resolutions RC 1921, a resolution of the City of Noblesville Common Council of intention to vacate public right-of-way in the City of Noblesville, Indiana. Chuck Haberman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
See that okay?
Mm-hmm.
So this is in support of East Bank property, East Bank project. The intention is to vacate right-of-way, as you can see here, on the west and south boundaries of the McMillan Property Service Station there on the corner, in order to continue on with the right-of-way. So upon approval of this resolution, we'd also need to set a public hearing on June 15th to hear the attached ordinance. So I'll take any questions if you have it.
Questions for Mr. Haberman? Go ahead, Mr. Air.
Looking at this square 17, lot 1 and 2, would that be the McMillan Station?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion on this item.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Air.
I would move that we approve Resolution RC 19-21.
Second. There's a motion to approve RC 1921, and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Nine oh.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would move to establish a public hearing on June 15th for this item.
Second. This year?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And a second? Okay, so move, there's a motion to establish a public hearing on June 15th, 21, and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Passes. Counsel to consider Resolution RC 2021, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Noblesville, approving the order of the Noblesville Plan Commission. Mr. Howard?
Mr. President, if I, if you can indulge me, on the previous item that I presented, the issuance of the bonds that will require a public hearing, I would ask that you set a public hearing on the issuance of the developer-backed bonds for your 15th meeting. Thank you.
Oh, man, Evelyn missed one. Okay. Can I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would move that we establish a public hearing in conjunction with ordinance 41-05-21.
Second.
June 15th.
21.
21?
21.
There is a motion to establish a public hearing on June 15th, and a second for item ordinance 41-05-21, and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine oh. Motion.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. President. The resolution before you is a resolution that helps divide up the land for the various TIF districts that are part of the Village at Federal Hill project. Initially, the parking lot in the park was in the original 1989 or '88 Noblesville TIF district. Obviously, it's not generating any revenue because it's part of the tax exempt park. The other block bounded by Connor, Logan, Nixon, and John Street is also taken out of the original downtown district. And those, that, those actions have been taken by the Redevelopment Commission and approved by the Plan Commission in anticipation for coming here today. The next thing that this resolution does is create two new districts, the Village at Federal Hill's east allocation area in orange, and the Village of Federal Hill west allocation area in the green and the blue, excluding the Wendy's property, which is surrounded in red. Again, these changes to the various TIF districts and establishing new TIF districts with a lower base assessed value has been approved by preliminary resolution of the Redevelopment Commission, approved by the Plan Commission, as required by statute, and this resolution is before you. It will then go back to the Redevelopment Commission for a notice public hearing next month. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Howard?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve RC 20-21, as submitted.
Motion to approve RC 2021, and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Do we need to establish a public hearing? No.
No, that would be in front of the Redevelopment Commission. Thank you.
Counsel to consider Resolution RC 2121, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Noblesville, Indiana, approving a lease between the Noblesville Community Development Corporation and the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission, approving the issuance of leased rental bonds and other matters related thereto. Mr. Howard?
Again, part of Village at Federal Hill project, the, this resolution concerns financing of the parking garage, which will be located in the orange site internal, which I think we're all happy on all four sides. The original development agreement, this is a change, was the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $9 million. Construction costs have gone up. One of the things we worked with back and forth with the developer and with the assistance and recommendation of the administration, that that number would go to a not-to-exceed $10 million. Fortunately, interest rates are extremely low, and that million dollars would be fairly insignificant. The not-to-exceed annual payment on the leased rental bonds would be $700,000. The lessor would be the Noble, I'm sorry, the Noblesville Community Development Corporation will have the same structure with them as the lessor, and the redevelopment less see exactly same financial model as the Levinson property. This resolution preliminarily approves the lease and other matters related with the parking garage, and other than the price, is consistent with the development agreement that you passed last August.
Thank you. I think it's kind of incredible to get the fourth side of this wrapped, and with construction prices going crazy, that this is the only change. It's kind of a testament to the hard work of the administration and the team here. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd move that we approve RC 21-21, as submitted.
Second. Motion to approve RC 2121, and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Nine oh. Counselor passes. Counsel to consider Resolution RC 2221, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Noblesville, approving the transfer of certain real property to the Noblesville Redevelopment Commission for the substitution of collateral in the 2015 lease with the Noblesville Redevelopment Authority. Mr. Howard?
This project does not want for complexity. The area where the new parking garage and the development's going to occur is now part of the leased premises for the park. the development's going to occur is now part of the leased premises for the park. If you re, it's a redevelopment authority, redevelopment commission lease and as you know, the lease is a conduit of financing that gives you flexibility by not being included in your constitutional debt limit. The issue here is that when you do that, when you do that lease, the, you have a trustee, a corporate trustee, in this case, Bank of New York Mellon, and they have a duty to make sure that their leased premises or their collateral for the lease remains the same during the term of the lease. Obviously, in order to construct this project, this lease premise, this part of the leased premises needs to be released from the trustee, by the trustee. So, last October, we started working with appraisers and surveyors and different people to come up with a plan where we could represent to the trustee that they were getting like-kind, equal to or better collateral from land being added to the leased premises. After we financed the park, a couple things happened. One, we obtained the, what we call it, the First Merchants Bank site in a negotiation between the bank and the city. The other thing we did, we found that part of this ground along, kudos to John Berry for that, we found that part of this land along State Road 32 was essentially no man's land with no detectable title of record. So, we, just to kind of clean up things, just had Wallace clean it up and get a quiet title action and now, not foreseeing this issue, but you can never have too much land. So, the appraised value of these two parcels is within 3% of the value of this parcel according to our appraiser. We have submitted the proper paperwork to the trustee and they have approved the substitution of collateral subject to your approval of taking these two city parcels. They will be deeded to the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Authority will be deeding this parcel out for Village at Federal Hill project. That's as simple as I can make it. Sorry. Any questions?
Thank you. I, I appreciate. This is, this is not easy and I appreciate your hard work and diligence here. It's a pretty creative solution.
Well, I have consultants on speed dial.
At least, I knew you didn't do it. I just thought it was pretty creative.
Thank you.
Any, any questions for Mr. Howard?
Well done, Counsel.
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Eyre.
I'd make a motion that we approve resolution RC 22-21.
Second.
motion to approve RC 2221 and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. 9-0. Passes. Transfers. Counsel to consider transfer TA 0421 an appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign funding for the reassignment of the community engagement manager position. Sam Barris.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilmember Sam Barris, Office of Finance and Accounting. Mr. O'Connor did a good job summarizing the three transfers on the agenda tonight in his committee report, so I'll be brief. This first one moves about $70,000 of appropriation authority from the Economic Development Department to the Planning Department. That is to cover a operational change where our community engagement manager is effectively switching departments. So, this is cost related directly to her position. So, it's fiscally neutral, pretty straightforward, but happy to answer any questions about that transfer.
Any questions for Mr. Barris?
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I'd move we approve transfer TA-04-21 as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve transfer TA 0421 and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0. Counsel to consider transfer TA 0521 an appropriation transfer in the general fund to provide funding for a grant consultant. Sam Barris.
Sure. So, this second transfer is to provide $95,000 of appropriation authority to cover a consultant contract to help with our planning for the Ready Grant Program. That's the Regional Cities 2.0 program that was recently announced by the governor. So, this work would help position the city to best take advantage of that program. And in this case, the funding source is the general fund contingency. So, the adopted budget included about half a million dollars of contingency funding to cover expenses that came up over the course of the year like this. So, this dips into that money.
Thank you.
And just as an update on this potential grant, that if we are awarded the grant, up to $50,000 can be reimbursed as a part of this whole process. So, it's not that the City of Noblesville's completely investing this entire amount and my understanding is that remaining amount, we're hoping to partner with other cities throughout Northern Hamilton County and the area. They could also potentially contribute to this cost.
That's correct, yeah.
Mr. President?
Mr. Smith? I move that we approve transfer TA-05-21 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve transfer TA 0521 and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. 9-0. Counsel to consider transfer TA 0621 an appropriation transfer in the general fund to provide funding for the, for a city employee compensation review. Sam Barris.
Thank you. So, similar to the last action, this transfer caps $65,000 in this case from the general fund contingency appropriation to fund a consultant to conduct a compensation study for city employees. This would both benchmark what we're paying different types of employees against peer cities as well as look internally to make sure we don't have pay equity or issues within our organization. So, as Mr. O'Connor mentioned, we haven't had this type of study conducted for city pay in some times, so we think it's necessary. Happy to answer any questions.
Do you know when the last time we did this was?
I think 2004.
Thank you. How much has changed since then? So, any other comments or questions?
Not at all.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wilds?
I would move that we approve transfer TA-06-21 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion to approve transfer TA 0621 and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam. Thanks for your patience. The moment we've all been waiting for. Counsel comments?
President?
Ms. Wilds?
I would just like to follow up on my comments about the Peony Festival and the success that it had. We have some other fun weekends coming up soon. June 4th will be the Pork Shop Festival, Pork Shop Dinner on the Courthouse Square, and then on June 5th will be their pancake breakfast and the Main Street Black Party.
Is that the Lions Club?
That's the Lions Club, yes. And then on Saturday, June 19th, Nickel Plate Arts will be having their Maker Fair activities going on along with the St. Michael Strawberry Festival. It's coming back. So, we've got some, lots of fun things happening in downtown Noblesville continuing on. So, it's a great time to be a resident of Noblesville and Farmer's Market's awesome.
And the Main Street Black Party is the 5th, June 5th?
Correct.
As Mr. Eyre says, if you can't find something to do here, you're not looking very hard.
I just wanted to thank the members of the public that choose to spend two hours with us on a Tuesday night.
The bitter end.
The bitter end.
I just got an update here, just real quick. I wanted to check it for my counsel comment. The Noblesville girls softball team has defeated Fishers tonight 6 to 3. They move to the championship game tomorrow night.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Always follow the softball.
Any other comments? Getting adjourned.